Heard about this for many years and never made it, so I wanted to see this jazz performances.
And perhaps even shake a leg. I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
In this week's list of things to do, an outdoor showing of La Bamba, an exhibit on Harry Potter and paying tribute to the iconic Route 66. Summer is coming to an end and so is the Pershing Square Friday Night Flick series, which ends in September. The film being shown on Friday, August 29th will be La Bamba. It's the Pershing Square Facebook choice. La Bamba is the story of the life and career of Chicano rock and roll star Ritchie Valens. Films are shown on a 20-foot inflatable screen and start at 8:00 PM. Pershing Square is located at 532 South Olive Street downtown. Pack a picnic, bring a blanket or lawn chair. You can find details at facebook.com/pershingsquarela. And if you are a Harry Potter fan, you won't want to miss this exhibit at the Hollywood Museum. The museum's new collection of sorcery includes acquisitions from the Harry Potter film franchise. Included in the exhibit are the broom, quill, and ink bottle Harry used while at Hogwarts School of Witchcraft and Wizardry. A black wand box signed by actress Maggie Smith and a series of wand boxes with their coordinating wands are displayed, highlighted by Harry's black handle instruction wand and Dumbledore's purple handle wand, both in their dragon skin boxes. The Hollywood Museum is located at 1660 North Highland Avenue in Hollywood. For ticket prices and hours, go to thehollywoodmuseum.com. And if you're more into real life, specifically the history of our region, then check out the exhibit Route 66: The Road and the Romance, on view at the Autry National Center of the American West, now through January 4th of 2015. Discover the facts and fiction surrounding the Mother Road through more than 250 artifacts that trace the history of the route and its impact on American popular culture. See the oldest existing Route 66 shield alongside vintage gas pumps and neon art. You can also read from the pages of John Steinbeck's original handwritten manuscript for The Grapes of Wrath. The Autry is located at 4700 Western Heritage Way. Go to rout66.theautry.org/exhibition. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. The kids in Hollywood are ready to play ball as the L.A. Dodgers begin another season of baseball clinics. Anna Marcos takes us to a session at the Lemongrove Rec Center.
Hazel Zamora may look all L.A. Dodger, well, almost. But don't be deceived by the pink Hello Kitty bag. Inside are stored some of her biggest treasures, her mitt and baseball bat. And she's ready to go to bat with some real L.A. Dodgers.
Because you could bat, catch, and hit the ball, and you could run into the bases.
This is one of the baseball clinics the L.A. Dodgers are hosting this season. And these kids at Hollywood's Lemongrove Rec Center will get one-on-one training with the likes of ex-Dodgers players Al Downing and Tim Leary.
You get to see Major League Baseball players, whether they're current or former, and you hear, you know, the proper how to do it. Because a lot of times, you're coached by your neighbor.
The kids rotate through the stations, hitting, pitching, catching, and running their way through the sessions. Apparently even reporters can learn something here.
So that would have been a homerun that you hit?
No, it would have been an RBI single.
This is one of the things that kids are learning. It's called fielding a ball. Let's see if I can do it. Catch and cover. I did it, right?
Very good.
Not bad for a lefty.
I like baseball. I play for fun. I'm good, but not that good.
It's a real good sport. It helps you with a lot of moves and it helps you in other sports.
I hope to learn how to pitch, how to catch the ball properly with the baseball mitt, and learn more stuff about baseball.
I know what I get out of it. When I was a youngster, I was one of those kids.
And so, from the pros to the kids, the baseball Dodgers' legacy gets passed on once again. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
And in this week in tweets, we go from baseball to basketball. For all the controversy in the aftermath of former Clippers owner Don Sterling's recorded racist comments that eventually got him banned from the NBA, the city of Los Angeles now celebrates a new era, one in which former Microsoft CEO Steve Ballmer now owns the team. The L.A. Mayor's Office Twitter account posted this photo of Mayor Garcetti at the podium during a rally at Staples Center with the caption "Welcoming the L.A. Clippers' new owner Steve Ballmer to L.A. #CityOfChampions." And on the photo itself is a quote from the mayor that says, "When the Clippers are on the road, they represent us," it says Los Angeles on their jerseys. Now people will know that the Clippers truly represent the city of champions. And over on Instagram, the L.A. Clippers shared this photo saying, "Thanks for bringing the energy at our fan festival #ClipperNation #It'sANewDay." And that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We leave you with the sights and sounds of the Tall Ships Festival. See you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Good morning. Good morning. Today is August 26th, Tuesday. I'd like to welcome each and every one of you to your Los Angeles City Council. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 AM. All the welcome. Madam Clerk, I believe we have a quorum. If you could please call the roll.
Bloomingfield, Bonner, Buscaino, Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Wezar, Carras, Krikorian, Labange, Martinez, Ofero, Parks, Price, Wesson. Twelve members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Englander moves, Carras seconds, next.
Communitar resolutions for approval.
Bloomingfield moves, Price seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, today is Tuesday. Now be the time for the flag salute.
Okay, if we could rise and Mr. Labange, if you'd please lead us. Flag salute.
Thank you very much. Please all rise and face the flag and think of those who've served us in the past and today and in the future. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Okay, Madam Clerk, if we could just go through the agenda?
Mr. President, there's requests to continue Items 1, J, and K to September 9th and to refer Item 18 to the Rules, Elections, and Intergovernmental Relations Committee.
Okay, so without objection, that'll be the order?
Items 1 and 2 are items known as for public hearing. The Department of Building and Safety reports that Item 1D and I may be received and filed as much as the liens have been paid or owner-occupied dwellings exempt from lien.
Okay, so ordered.
And also, there is request to reduce the lien amount for Item 1C to $2,430.56.
Again, so ordered.
And there are cards on both 1 and 2.
Okay, so let's move on.
Items 3 through 20 are items which public hearings have been held.
Mr. Sadio, I didn't hear you. Or was that?
Continue 1H. Continue 1H.
If we could continue 1H for how long?
September 9th would be fine.
September 9th?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Wezar?
3, 4, and 5, please, special.
Okay, so we'll hold 3, 4, and 5 special for Mr. Wezar. Members, any others specials? Mr. Buscaino?
If we can, hold 6, 19, and 20.
We will hold those items for Mr. Buscaino. Mr. Englander?
Yes, if you can hold Mr. President, Item 17.
17 for Mr. Englander. I thought I saw Mr. Parks.
No, he called.
Okay, so let's prepare to vote on the... Mr. Carras.
Could I also call 13 special?
13 special. Okay, so let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, so that brings us where, Madam Clerk?
Items 21 through 33 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are before this House. Do we have cards?
Yes, cards on Items 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, and 31.
Okay, let's hold those items and let's... Mr. Parks?
I just had one question. Do we have a report coming on what the salaries are actually that we're voting on? Oh, you gotta announce it. Okay, thank you.
22. And then I've been informed we want to hold 30 for Ms. Martinez. So are there any items left to vote on?
Yes, Items 21, 28, 29, 32, and 33.
Well, let's do that. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
All righty, that brings us where? Close session, Item 34?
Yes, Mr. President. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
I think I'll look over to Mr. Krikorian and follow his lead.
So, Item number 35 was reconsideration of the matter that we considered last week, so that can be voted on in open session. No need to go into closed session again on that, Mr. President. Item number 34, I'd like to hold on the desk for the moment.
So let's hold 34. Do we have any cards on 35?
35 public hearing has been held.
So, I forgot all about that. Okay, let's prepare to vote on that item. Let's open the roll.
On 34?
Whoa, whoa, whoa. What, Mr. City Attorney? Okay, so this one, I want to make sure two of these, two of our members are aware that this is the item. So on 35, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes, 2 noes.
Okay, we had a mix-up here. Mr. Wezar's been here and his name was not... So he should be on all of the items that we voted on. Fourth with on 35. That brings us where? Yes, Mr. Englander?
If I could request Item 29, fourth with, please?
Without objection. Okay, Mr. Wezar, why I'd like to defer to you at this time for a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President.
And, Mr. President, just for the record, for Item 35, the vote was 12 ayes, 2 noes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. And I am joined today by a charity that is made up of all volunteers to help individuals in the Skid Row area and also to help homeless individuals throughout the city and county of Los Angeles. We have with us today some individuals who give them themselves selflessly, who help human beings no matter where they are in their life. And I'm talking about the Operation Help the Homeless organization. And with us today are board members Isaac Pierce, Peter Hernandez, Michael Castaneda, Don Matter, Salina Palacios, Ricardo Flores, Jesus Casada. Since 2010, Operation Help the Homeless has been helping countless individuals, as I mentioned. And throughout the year, you'll see them in the Skid Row area hounding out special support items like tote bags with clothes, food, and everyday essentials to over 1,000 homeless individuals. And they just don't do it during the holiday season, but they are out there each season and throughout the year making this assistance possible. We recently partnered with the county to expand the city's Operation Healthy Streets program that will clean up our area more often and with more intensity. But the challenges that are on Skid Row, we know, cannot be handled by government alone. It is operation, it is organizations like Operation, like this sort of Operation Help the Homeless that is helping us support individuals and helping them get back on their feet. And we certainly could use more organizations like Operation Help the Homeless, who see the beauty and worth in people, especially when they are down on their luck. One of the things that I admire most about this group is their commitment to service for people and communities outside of their focus of the Skid Row area that are willing to lend a helping hand throughout the city and the county. Wherever the help is needed, they are there. Wherever there's a person in need, they are there. Wherever there's a community cleanup to take place, they are there. These are selfless individuals and volunteers who are making our communities better and who are helping individuals get back on their feet. I wanted to recognize them here in council to give them a big thank you on behalf of the city of Los Angeles for all they do. Because after all, for many of us, when we pass by homeless individuals, we don't think of what that person, what that person may have gone through, what is happening in their lives. But these individuals are doing the things that our city must do more of, and that is to help these individuals get back on their feet and do better for themselves, for our community, and for the city. So with that, I wanted to recognize Operation Help the Homeless. Thank Isaac Pierce and all the great people and volunteers from Operation Help the Homeless. Thank you so much and congratulations.
Congratulations and thank you.
Good morning, council. I would like to thank, first of all, Councilman Wezar and the entire District 14 office for all their continuous support throughout our efforts. Operation Help the Homeless originated in 2010. God put it in my heart one day to help those in need wherever the need was greatest. We started off by making 100 homeless kits containing the essential items that every person should not go without. And we made 100 homeless kits in the backyard of my mom's house. And we took them out on a Saturday morning at 5:00 AM and we ran out in about 10 minutes, only yet to have hundreds and hundreds still people running from blocks away left empty-handed. And I didn't like that feeling. Since 2010, our operation has grown to over 500 volunteers and supporters. We have reached out to over 1,200 community members of homelessness, children of abuse, senior citizens that are low income. But we provided to over 1,200 community members and citizens in this community. I ask that, that the focus also too, and from every single, I'm gonna, I actually want to call out to every single council here. Joe Buscaino, personally, last year you did a great job with the sock drive. I commend that for what you did, and I encourage you in your office, continue that, okay? Because those things, they do matter. The socks are essential, things like that. But I appreciate it. We're gonna continue to move forward, and we are an asset to this community. So if there is an issue in your community, then you need help with homelessness. As far as building hope and trust in these people, that's what we specialize in. So call on us, call on us. We're here for you guys and we're here for the community. Thank you so much. And I also like to thank my brother Michael Castaneda, Ricardo Flores, and my entire staff and board members also for making this possible. Thank you, governor.
No, thank you. Thank you. Thank you so very, very much. Along, you've come a long way from the backyard putting together 100 homeless kids.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President. You know, what's unique as well about Operation Help the Homeless is that in Skid Row, where the policy for the longest time has been, don't support kids initiatives or kids activities because this is not a safe place for kids. But the fact of the matter is that there's hundreds, not thousands, of homeless kids in the Skid Row area that need the support. We gotta do more for them. This was one of the first organizations who kept the faith and kept supporting our young people in the Skid Row area. So thank you very much for the work you've done. Thank you.
Give them another round of applause. Thank you again. Okay, we're gonna begin to deal with the reappointments of our commissioners. We'll start with Item 23. And I think that was held by Frank. Are you here, Frank? I didn't see you. Mr. Lima, please come up on Item 23. And if we could have the commissioner come sit at the center aisle.
Thank you, council president.
Ms. Abara. Yes, Mr. Lima.
My name is Frank Lima, and I proudly serve...
My name is Frank Lima, and I proudly serve as the president of United Firefighters of Los Angeles City. On behalf of more than 3,000 firefighters, paramedics, inspectors, dispatchers, and pilots, we would like to express our support for President Ms. Delia Ibarra being reappointed to the Fire Commission. Over the past year, we've had an opportunity to build a very strong relationship with the commission and the President Ibarra. And we welcome her reappointment and the chance to partner with the entire commission and the LAFD leadership in order to rebuild our department together. The LAFD has the finest firefighters and paramedics in the country, doing more with less. And as President Ibarra and other commissioners have witnessed, it has been a difficult time for our firefighters out in the field. As you all know, there are a lot of challenges facing our fire department, and we are thankful for the commission's guidance and input over the past year under Ms. Ibarra's leadership. In times of challenge, there is opportunity, and we have the chance to improve our department with the new leadership that's in place. Our biggest challenge is our staffing crisis. We remain the most understaffed big-city fire department in the entire country. Over the past five years, our department has been decimated, having lost nearly 600 firefighters and paramedics to retirement and attrition while only recently hiring our first new class of 58 firefighters. We need to make hiring of new firefighters in our department the number-one priority of our commission, our chief, and our elected officials. On behalf of the dedicated firefighters, paramedics, dispatchers, inspectors, and pilots of United Firefighters of Los Angeles City, we congratulate Ms. Ibarra on her reappointment, and we hope to continue this relationship in the years to come. I encourage you to support the reappointment, reappointment of Ms. Delia Ibarra to the Fire Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President Lima. Anyway, members, remember, these are all reappointments. So at this time, I'm going to ask the clerk to open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
We're going to now move to item 24. Ms. Kim, if you could come forward. This was held by Mr. Walsh, John Walsh. Item 24.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or J. Walsh Confidential, tweeting @HollywoodDems. This concerns the police commissioners. This, Ms. Kim voted, I just want everyone to realize that she voted for the worst police chief we've had in, in history, Charlie Beck. So this is a vote for Beck. Am I Beck right or wrong? Remember, the reason she actually voted for him was that before she was appointed originally by the mayor, she had to hand in a signed statement without a date on it saying that she resigns. So had she voted for Beck, her conscience, she, the mayor, would have just put a date on it, and she would have been out. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, again, thank you. I want to thank you for your, Mr. Labange.
She's in the 4th district, and she cares about diversity, cares about the city and improving all public safety. Thank you.
Okay, all right. With that said, let us, again, thank you for the work you've already done and the work that you will do in the future. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Congratulations on your reappointment. Item 25. Held special by cards. James Langford and a John Walsh.
Citizens of Los Angeles, item 25, Ralph M. Tarazza, chief of Los Angeles Fire Department. We demand he receive a pay that is equal and fair based on all what the constituents of Los Angeles ask for. And that is fairness with transparency. Fairness with transparency. So going back to item 23, old business brought out earlier, if you will listen in, the fire department need more resources. So again, give Mr. Ralph M. Tarazza accessible pay that is equivalent to what he needs to perform the duties and responsibilities for the City of Los Angeles. And I hold my time to one minute, and I end at number six. Bye.
Okay, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at J. Walsh Confidential. This concerns how much money, the salary recommendation for Ralph M. Tarazza's. Of course, it doesn't appear in here how much you're going to pay him. And when I went through the item number 140999, I couldn't find out. Finally, somebody at the, at the fire chief's office, one of his right-hand people who hates his guts, told me that this, remember, a black man is being replaced by an Hispanic. Why? Because the blacks didn't vote for the Mayor Garcetti and the Hispanics did. And let me tell you that this Hispanic gentleman, nothing against him, but he's going to be receiving a quarter of a million dollars more than the black man received. One quarter of a million dollars. But then again, our racist mayor probably considers black skin worth, white and brown skin worth much more than black skin.
On the subject.
I'm talking on the subject. The subject is how much is he's being paid. And let me tell you, if I'm wrong, you stop me when I get up and you claim that he's not going to receive in his quote package, and they've got some of the money hidden, one quarter of a million dollars. Whenever I bring up race, the first, and you've got all these puppets up here, field hands, I'm telling you right now, this is racism. Every black firefighter knows that there is racism in the, in the fire department, and it probably is going to get worse now that we have Mr. Tarazza's in charge of what's happening. And, and if you want to see all the racism explode, come down to the Rap Festival on Labor Day, HollywoodHighlands.org. My, I devote everything I say to.
Sergeant, move the, thank you. Sergeant, move the chair. Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes. Excuse me, Mr. President. For item 25, the annual salary for the fire chief is $292,424.40.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's do item 17. Mr. Englander, we're going to do 17. So let, it's my understanding there are no cards. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes, 1 no.
All right. Mr. Buscaino, item 6.
If I may, Mr. President, call up Commissioner Dave Arian for a reappointment to the Harbor Commission. And in committee with Mr. Labange, chairman of the TCT Committee, we had an opportunity to hear Mr. Arian's commitment not only continuing to keep America's port number-one container port in the country, but also finding efforts to bring in people as well and ensuring that the Port of Los Angeles, the LA waterfront is a destination, is an attraction. And I wanted to have Mr. Com, have Mr. Arian introduce himself and thank him for his service and what he's done in the last five years sitting as a port commissioner. And we're, like to ask where he plans on going in the next several years, and, and what do you see the changes coming before us in the next several years at the Port of Los Angeles?
Yeah, thank you, Joe. When I came on the commission, we were faced with the reality of the port not being able to move forward in its construction and development because of a series of lawsuits and the whole question of the environmental issues. Those issues were resolved, and the Port of LA is now recognized as the cleanest port in the country and sets the example in terms of the Clean Air Program around the world. The difference between then and now, under the new mayor and with a new director, is we really have to refocus on the question of where we make our money, and that's off the movement of cargo through the port. But in addition to that, anybody who came down the last weekend and you saw the tall sales program, sales program we had along with that big duck, that big yellow duck. Well, you know, I remember years ago with the last tall sales program, I went down there, and there was a turnout. But you know, Joe, when you saw what happened this weekend, we had nearly 300,000 people in San Pedro. Brother Labange came down. Thank you for showing up, 301. And I think what that does is sets the example of what is possible under the next four or five years as an economic region and economic development. And I'd asked the city council, as well as the mayor, to partner with us as you would with Staples Center or with Hollywood in bridge to breakwater, eight miles of waterfront real estate that has the possibility of becoming something very, very special. It's not just about the port. This is a asset and a resource for the entire city of LA, and we need that partnership. And I think that's what you're going to see developing in the next four or five years. And with your leadership, Joe, and hopefully the leadership of the mayor and the city council, we can develop this relationship where there'll be just as many people, if not more, people coming in to the harbor area that go to Staples Center, go to Hollywood or anywhere else, and it becomes a main attraction, not only regionally but internationally. And I think that's where we're headed, Joe.
No, I appreciate that, Commissioner. And it's, it's great to hear that commitment from you as seeking the best and highest use of our waterfront redevelopment efforts. And, and to hear your commitment is encouraging, is inspiring. And I just need you to share your, your sentiments and your commitment to make positive change when it comes to retail commercial development to your other four colleagues. And that's what it's going to take. Thank you for your service. So you're saying you believe in a new development along the Wilmington and San Pedro waterfront?
Yeah, I think this weekend proved what's possible. I've lived in San Pedro my entire life, over 60 years, and I've never seen what we did this last week. And I think it's just the beginning. And I want to thank in particular one of our directors down there, Cynthia Ruiz, who really championed this and is really making the port a destination, not just for cargo but for people.
Thank you. And in committee, I, I shared with you some frustrations that I've had in this last fiscal cycle, this last budget, where through the TRAPAC overruns, Mr. Labange, Mr. Bonin, we and I, we had some, we had some issues in approving the cost overruns of $550 million. But when it came to dedicating dollars to waterfront redevelopment, we only saw $1.5 million this fiscal cycle. So can you share, just on Friday, a number of my colleagues spoke on the need to move forward on retail commercial development along the water. Can you share with the council and my colleagues what was the mindset of the, of the commission when you approved those dollars during this, this current fiscal cycle?
Yeah, and in terms of Ulta C, which is the new development, we have a signed contract where we're committed over the next five years to over $76 million. But that's going to be based on their ability to raise a certain amount of money. But we, we have budgeted that over the next five years. So the money sits there waiting for a commitment on their side based on our contractual agreement. In terms of the ports of call development, we presently don't have a contract yet with the developers, and once we do, there will be that commitment. We've already started infrastructure projects. Whether that contract comes or doesn't come, whether we have that agreement or not, we already are starting infrastructure programs that are going to be necessary for any kind of development in that area. And I think we have that commitment. If by chance we reach an agreement in the short term, there is money available in reserve for expediting and moving more aggressively on infrastructure projects, and, you know, I'll support that.
Great to hear that. Again, colleagues, yes, sir, wrapping it up. It's great to see and hear, actually, Commissioner Arian's commitment in moving forward and knowing that we need to continue to say that the port shouldn't see this waterfront redevelopment effort as a donation to the community, but as an investment in creating a diversified workforce at our port with service-related jobs, hotel industry, tourism-related jobs. And if we can do it in LA Live and Hollywood and Highland, we can definitely do it along the Grand Channel of the Mall in the Western Hemisphere, that's the Port of Los Angeles. And also, thank you for billing the, and embracing the importance of creating efficiencies at the Port of Los Angeles. Dave, you led that charge. And with the selection of Gene Soroka as our, our new director of the Port of Los Angeles, you're going to see your work come to life. And I want to just congratulate you and thank you for your commitment to making the port, continuing to make the port number-one in cargo, but also number-one in people, a people destination as well. So thank you. I encourage an eye vote.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Labange.
Just real quick, Joe, good job, Joe, all the way, following the big shoes of Janice Hahn. Dave, all the way, neighborhood, jobs, 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 and economic development. And I had a wonderful time Saturday night, Saturday afternoon in Gil Sadias at the Latin Jazz Festival, but in the harbor. And there was traffic jams because people loved it. So I supported Beta Breakers all the way, and all of us should get involved and help the Port of Los Angeles. The only thing I want to do, Joe, is add San Pedro to the name of the freeway. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Congratulations on your reappointment. All right. Again, I want to remind the members, these are reappointments, not newly-appointed members. Mr. Weezer, if we could defer to you for items three, four, and five?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. And I'd like to ask Robert An, Maria Cabildo, and Lydia Mather, if you could please come up to the table. And colleagues, this is individuals who are being reappointed to the, two to the City Planning Commission and one to the South Valley Area Planning Commission. We have with us today Maria Cabildo, who is a reappointment to the City Planning Commission. She has been on the commission for a year, along with Robert An, who is also being reappointed to the City Planning Commission. He has been on the commission for about a year. And also, we have Lydia Mather for the South Valley Area Planning Commission. And first, I want to thank all of you for the work you've done. It's an incredible time in the City of Los Angeles when we are now finally looking at reviewing our zoning code that hasn't been looked at in over 40 years. We have communities that are now identifying themselves, and we're finding reinvestment in some neighborhoods that have been neglected for many years. And I think it's one of those times in the City of LA that doesn't come often, when we get to have a time to reflect on who we are as a city and where do we go from here. And planning is perhaps one of the most important tools that we have to make that possible. So all of you serve in some very important positions with very important decisions to make that will redo the City of Los Angeles, I think, for the future. And so thank you for your service. And if we could just have each one of you introduce yourselves, say a little bit about who you are and also what your ideas are about serving on these commissions. And let's go from Robert and start back this way.
Thank you, Councilman Weezer. Good morning, Mr. President and honorable council members. My name is Robert An. I'm a resident of the 4th district and I was born and raised here in Los Angeles, currently serving also on the Hollywood Wilshire YMCA. And very happy and honored to be back here again. As the councilmen referred, referenced, we've got this very ambitious program called Recode LA. And I think it offers this commission, the department, and the city an unprecedented opportunity to really bring the planning code into the 21st century. And there are a lot of exciting ideas being floated and being considered, a lot of forward-thinking, cutting-edge policy initiatives that I think will serve this city well as we start planning for the future. A lot of these ideas and initiatives have already been implemented in cities throughout the country, and I think we can definitely see what's been working and what hasn't been working in other cities and bring some of those ideas back according to the unique needs of the City of Los Angeles. I'm excited to be back here. I'm excited to be here, excited to get back to work, and look forward to working with all of you for a better LA.
I'm Maria Cabildo, and I'm the president of East LA Community Corporation, and I'm a resident, a proud resident of CD14. I am really excited about the future of Los Angeles. I feel that our transit expansion is a real opportunity for the city, and I think that the planning department and under leadership of Councilman Weezer and others, really, really looking at how we can use that transit expansion to create a city that works for everybody. And I think it's really critical that as we grow as a city of Los Angeles, we also ensure that this continues to be a place where people of various incomes can live and thrive. So I think as we build out our transit system and we build housing near transit, we really need to protect our core ridership and make sure that those core riders that have an income of around $20,000 a year can still continue to live in the neighborhoods where they've been living for decades. So I think that's one of our challenges as a planning commission of how do we grow the city and not become a more unequal city, because then we all lose. So I think using planning and land use policy to tackle issues of income inequality and creating spaces for everybody in the city is critical, and I'm very excited to serve for an additional four years on the planning commission.
Thank you.
Hello, Mr. President and council members. My name is Lydia Mather, and I am absolutely honored to be reappointed to the South Valley Area Planning Commission. Our duties as area planning commissions are a little different. We resolve appeals, and it has been an honor to find a way to protect progress and communities as we go forward in that process. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I think we have before us a great group of individuals that will, that with their background experience and commitment and passion will continue to serve well on these commissions, and I ask for an eye vote. Thank you.
Ms. Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to thank my constituent, Lydia Mathers, who lives in Council District 6. She's a tireless advocate for our community, and she was also the force behind our first historical preservation overlay zone in the San Fernando Valley. She's had a tremendous experience serving on, on the commission now for five years. So I think you as, as the, as the new commission is now pretty much new, you are probably the one that folks are going to rely on for your leadership. So I commend you for serving another term, and thank you very much for everything that you do. Congratulations to you all.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, let's, we're going to vote on that. We've got some great commissioners here up for reappointment. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
All right. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, let's, okay, let's go to item 30. I think all of the concerns where it relates to this item has been alleviated, so let's prepare to vote on 30. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
All right, I'd like to go back to Mr. Buscayeno on item 22.
Thank you, Mr. President. It gives me great pleasure to introduce to you Commissioner Hooper, seeking a second, a second term.
You should have done this one first.
Yes, we can do that, yes, sir.
You should have done this one first, Mr. Buscayeno. Donnie, we, we, we gotta talk to this young man.
At last.
Don't start.
All right, sorry. We say the best for last. Colleagues, Ms. Hooper is an incredible individual, someone who serves with passion and commitment and dedication to the Watts community. As a founding member of the Watts Gang Task Force, she's, she's one of two resident commissioners, serving on the Housing Authority Commission, has served, her public service life spans 20 years at Nickerson Gardens Resident Management Corporation. She was a recording secretary and later nominated as president, and she's been involved in many programs at Nickerson Gardens, including operation of the Food Bank, Youth Council Mentor, and Safe Passage Program for Markham Middle School. Man, if we can just clone her, we need like a thousand more of you, Ms. Hooper. We have before us some key community members and partners. We have JJ from the Watts Gang Task Force, Donnie and Hank, also in the Watts Gang Task Force, and has been just critical in reducing crime and putting people together, especially through the midnight basketball that you led, Mr. President, with the midnight basketball started in your district, it's kind of spread throughout the city and including Watts. Captain Filting Greedys, who's here, has been very supportive of Ms. Hooper, and Ms. Hooper's been supportive of the Community Safety Partnership Program, that we have 10 dedicated officers at each of our developments in Watts, that we've seen an incredible reduction of violent crime because police officers are building relationships with kids and the residents, and you, you see the heart behind the badge here in the CSB program that we're so proud of. And because of that relationship, we've seen a drastic reduction in homicides, and specifically in, in Jordan Downs, a development that was once known for its high violent crime is one of the safest in the country. Incredible work done by the community, by the commissioner. We just want to share with us some of your thoughts on your experience on the commission and where you plan on going with it moving forward.
First of all, I would like to say good morning, and I thank you very much. I'm just happy to be here, and I know God has a better plan, better things for me to do, and I just don't know what else I could say. I would just like to say one of my daughters is with me this morning, two, two of my daughters are here with me this morning, and I'm very just happy to be here, and it's a lot of work to be done with the Housing Authority, but I'm there, I attend all the meetings, I attend all of the activities and all of the 14 housing developments. I don't know what else I could say, but just that God has really been good to me, and I thank the Lord for what he's allowing me to do in my community. And I would just like to thank Joe for being one of my partners, and that's all I have to say.
Well, Ms. Hooper, she's very humble, but she's led the effort in a billion-dollar project in redeveloping Jordan Downs. That's going to, for the first time in decades, is going to bring retail commercial into our beloved Watts community. Thank you for your leadership. We've got some work to do on the city side, on the housing authority side, but thank you for leading that charge.
Thank you.
We're, we're expanding Century Boulevard, bringing retail commercial space in, in South Los Angeles through the Jordan Downs project. We want to thank you for your leadership. Colleagues, ask for an eye vote, and let's reappoint, let's reappoint us and get back to work.
You don't have to speak. Your record speaks for you.
Thank you.
So let us please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Congratulations. Thank you for your service. Okay, let's go to item 26. I have a card from Mr. Walsh and Akala. Item 26, please come forward.
This concerns the salary recommendation for Ms. Holly L. Woolcott, new city clerk. Again, you're hiding the actual amounts, it's not in the agenda, it's not in the item package. When somebody hides something, they don't want you out there to know what's going on. So they're going to just, like they did before, again, she's not receiving the quarter of a million dollars, which no one denied up here, that Tarazas, the fire chief, is getting, but she's getting a hefty salary increase. Lots of salary increases while our pipes burst, because there's no money for pipes, only for salary increases.
Mr. Akala.
Well, I haven't even had a chance to turn on my, my camera. I'd like to take a picture of the cameraman that I'm...
No, you need to speak to the item.
Oh, the item. Well, my main concern is about, how come these people that run the, the hakla, the homeless thing, they're all pretty good size? That means they eat quite well, and the homeless don't. Oh, was that the previous item?
He is not talking about the item. Stay on this item, item 26.
Okay, okay, that was the previous item. All I care is about how in the heck are we going to create a program that has to do with communication from the Executive Employee Relations Committee relative to the salary of these people? Recommendation for the holy Woolcott City Clerk. Dude, all the salaries you give to these people that run the programs, where does it go? Just to salary, it doesn't go to run the program. So I think you're making a huge mistake, especially, remember the iPod incident, the, the Apple, Apple incident?
It has nothing to do with the city clerk. Nothing, has nothing to do with this item, Mr. Akala.
It has to do with the money that comes out of the city.
No, it doesn't. Thank you so very much. Thank you. All right, let's prepare to vote, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
And please sit down and be quiet, don't disrupt the meeting. Mr. Kokorian?
Mr. President, item number 34, I'd just like to ask that that matter be noted and filed, please.
Okay, without objection, that'll be the order.
Excuse me, Mr. President, also for item 26, the salary for the city clerk is $206,787.16.
Thank you. Let's go to item 27, which is Mr. Walsh and Mr. Herman. Mr. Walsh and Mr. Herman.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or J. Walsh, confidential. And number 27, this removes, this is, again, general salary recommendation. Thank you for reinforcing what I said about the city clerk. Get this, folks, the city clerk of Los Angeles...
On the item, this item, Mr. Walsh, has nothing to do with city clerk.
Mr. Rushmore Cervantes will, like the city clerk, when you approve this salary recommendation, which is anonymous, be receiving more, a higher salary than the governor of the state of California. Over 49 people who work for the city make more than Jerry Brown. That is ominous, that is disgusting, and that is LA. Don't come to LA, it is dangerous. Gangs rule. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you, Mr. Herman.
Today I wore a new mask, a mask of unwelcomeness, a mask that talks about the Executive Employee Relations Committee, recommendations for Mr. Rushmore Cervantes, General Manager of Housing and Community Investment Departments. But yet, the homeless population on our streets are the ones miserably dying, and that's why I wore this mask. Mr. City Attorney, as I speak, I notice you don't take any action to ask me why, under 504 regulations covering entities to receive federal aid, that the requirements common to these regulations include reasonable accommodation for employees, not to abuse the public funds of interest for these salaries and expenses as brought out by HollywoodHighland.org, John Walsh, confidential. And in my hand, I hold his book for the Accommodation of Employees with Disability Program.
He is not talking about this item.
Accessibility for effective...
On the subject, Mr. Herman.
Effective Housing and Community Investment Department of Los Angeles. If such a rate of salary for the position of General Manager is to be established and recommended, why can't we establish the same protocol for people who this gentleman represents under the category of homelessness?
Okay, thank you, thank you.
So going back, Mr. Rushmore Cervantes, General Manager, I, on behalf of the public, am against your high salary pay. Until you can be accountable and show the performance, then I can say the public agrees with you. At this point, the death of civilians is on your hands. Thank you.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let us please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
And, Mr. President, the salary for the General Manager Housing and Community Investment Department is $225,587.16.
Okay, let's go to item 31, called Special by Cards, and that would be Mr. Akala, and Mr. Akala, did you hear me call your name? No, 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 come on, if you want to speak, come on. Mr. Akala, then he passes, Mr. Walsh. No, he's disrupting now. I call your name, you come to the podium. He's doing, no, you're disrupting the meeting. No, I said that, but then he spoke after me, Mr. City Attorney. Mr. Walsh, you going to speak or not? Okay, he's out of town, time. Let's prepare to vote, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Mr. President, there's a request to send items 15, 16, and 33 forthwith.
Without objection, that'd be the order? Yeah, that's what I want to do, let's go to... Okay, Mr. Buscayeno, did you hold 19 and 20?
Yes.
Why don't we go there?
Thank you. Listen, we're going to hold, we're going to hear these together, if you can. Thank you. Colleagues, I was pleased to lead this effort with Mr. Kokorian and our joint Public Works Budget and Finance Committee last week. And I said then that our sidewalks are the most visible example of LA's crumbling infrastructure. When I became Chair of the Pub, Public Works Committee, I was shocked to learn that 4,600 miles are broken, and an estimated total repair costs $1.5 billion. And the fundamental question that we asked ourselves is who's responsible? And that is a question that we seemed to shake, kind of scratch our heads. The state law says that the property owner's responsible for fixing their sidewalks, and the city law says the city's responsible. And I see Mr. Parks just trying to battle with this issue as well over the course of the several years he's been here. But neither system has served us well, because the city can't afford to pay the entire cost to fix every broken sidewalk, and many residents can't afford to pay the entire cost to fix a sidewalk in front of their home. And I think the solution here, the compromise, is both the city and the property owner should pitch in to fix the sidewalks. The city also needs to take a more helpful approach than we did in the past, where we simply issued notices demanding property owners to fix their sidewalk in 30 days. And we should be using more of a carrot and less than a stick, which is why I introduced last year a motion to eliminate all permit and inspection fees. If somebody wants to fix our sidewalk, why are we charging residents fees to do just that? With item 19, we're asking the CAO to take the lead on a comprehensive report, and we need a comprehensive repair program moving forward on this issue of fixing our sidewalks. And item 19... And item 19, there are a number of various options. One is bringing back the 50-50 program, where the cost is shared evenly. A low or no-interest loan program, where the property owner's share is paid back slowly over time. Another option is creating assessment districts. Another option is a point-of-sale program, where repairs are made at the time a property is sold. And the last option that we'll hear back from the CAO, CLA, is a point-of-permit program, that if you're doing, if you're making repairs in your home under, over a certain amount, the point-of-permit program will seek the property owner to pay for the sidewalk repair. The city should also lead by example. And before asking residents to fix the sidewalks in front of their property, we, the city, should take care of our own property, our own sidewalks in front of city-owned property. So we, part of this effort in the allocation of the dollars is fixing sidewalks on city-owned property. In April, we began fixing sidewalks next to public property, parks, police stations, libraries. And item 20, also before, you will ask the CAO to report recommendations continuing that program permanently. The fiscal reality is, we don't have the money to continue with the status quo. We couldn't afford this in 1973, and members of this body in 1973 agreed to take on that responsibility of fixing our sidewalks, without even knowing that the money is available. And two years later, they defunded the program. So when we looked at this in the early 2000s of fixing sidewalks, the root issue was too enormous to tackle. So here we are today. And by the way, the city council then went against the mayor and the CAO's recommendation not to take ownership of the city sidewalk problem. We just need to move forward, roll up our sleeves, and come together with a comprehensive sidewalk program that's gonna not only benefit the city, but also the residents. It's shameful that we make our most vulnerable residents either risk their safety by walking in the street or become captives in their own homes, because they can't go anywhere. And it's our responsibility to pitch in, roll up our sleeves, and commit to solving this problem. So with that, Mr. Kocorian, thank you for partnering with me on this. I look forward to your continued leadership in moving forward on this comprehensive program of fixing our, a comprehensive repair program of addressing the sidewalk issue in the city of Los Angeles.
Councilmember Kocorian.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Buscaino, for your leadership on this issue and your chairmanship at the Public Works Committee. You've taken on a huge, huge task here, and it's about time. Because over 40 years ago, this city embarked upon a path that has failed its residents for the last four decades by allowing our sidewalks to fall into a state of completely unacceptable disrepair. A state that is potentially dangerous to public safety, that limits accessibility, that detracts from the quality of life in our neighborhoods. And that was a poorly thought-out direction that the council took then, in which, as Mr. Buscaino said, the city decided, because it was benefiting from some federal funding that was available during the Nixon administration, that we could embark upon this path of repairing tree root damage to sidewalks. Within the first two years of initiating that program, the program was two and a half years behind schedule. And by that time, federal funding had run out, and so the policy was, was, and has remained, a complete failure. In the ensuing four decades, this city has failed to address that problem. There's been a lot of talk about it, and no one has yet stepped up to actually, once and for all, solve it. So the motions that are before you today aren't the solution, they're the next step in reaching that solution. They're the next step in trying to bring the stakeholders together, bring together the business community, our residents, our neighborhoods, and our city departments, in figuring out the most effective, most cost-effective, most sustainable approaches for, once and for all, resolving this sidewalk damage backlog. So, Mr. Buscaino outlined some of the substantive issues that are in the motions that we'll be getting reports back on, and we'll have plenty of opportunity over the course of the coming months, after those reports come back, to debate the relative merits, the relative cost-effectiveness, the relative sustainability of these different policy approaches. We'll also have a lot of opportunity to determine the budgetary impacts of it and what the potential funding sources for those budgetary impacts will be. But it's the time to get down to brass tacks and really putting pen to paper and figuring this out is right now. The people of Los Angeles can't wait any longer. So the one other part of the motions that I did want to address that Mr. Buscaino didn't mention was, we are instructing the city staff to send out a questionnaire to begin to draw input from the 95 neighborhood councils throughout Los Angeles, because we want a program that's going to provide equitable treatment across all communities and a program that's going to meet the unique and individual needs of each of our neighborhoods. So the only way we're going to be able to craft that kind of policy is with the thorough input from each of our neighborhoods through their elected representatives in the neighborhood councils. So, members, this is a first step of what will be a long journey, but I'm convinced it will be a journey that will produce the results that we've waited for, for over four decades. And that is a complete and comprehensive solution to the challenge of our broken sidewalks.
Thank you. Councilmember Parks?
Thank you very much. I've only dealt with this for 12 years, but let me just give you a couple of ideas that I think, the weakness, I believe, in the two motions before us is that there are no identified long-term funding sources, and sidewalks aren't being fixed. So I don't know what we continue to tell the public, except we're gonna keep studying it. I think we have to realize, no matter what we come up with, whether it's point-of-sale, whether it's giving sidewalks back to the public, whether it's coming up with a franchise system, the public is going to pay for these sidewalks, one way or another. Either in their front pocket, their back pocket, out of their savings, they're gonna pay for it. And so why are we continuing to debate who's gonna pay for it? We were under the 1911 Act for six decades. We were only under the city's failed policies from '72, which is about four decades. Every other community in the state of California operates under the 9/11 Act. Any proposal that we come up with that does not include returning the sidewalk to the 1911 Act is a waste of most of our time and effort. The other issue, having studied this for a while, any program that we rely on the city's funds to sustain the program over time will fail, because those funds are not available, and we see, after year after year, that operational and infrastructure gets cut for personnel. The other issue, and this may sound like blasphemy, in the program that we just put together in the 8th District, we found it is something that we have to avoid, the higher-priced city employees, because you get far less product done in the city of Los Angeles. Just to give you an idea, just since March, it took us longer to get a contract put together by the city attorney than to put the sidewalks together. Since March, in the 8th District, we have replaced 80 sidewalks. We have four under construction now. We've removed 89 trees, one stump, and 20 tree roots. We put down 20,500 square feet of concrete at a cost of $400,000. You can't get that dealing with city employees at the cost and overhead. And the key is, if we're going to be moving forward on sidewalks, it almost assuredly, the funding has to go to the 9/11 Act, where the resident is paying for their sidewalk, and that we provide them a list of certified contractors that can do the sidewalks at far less cost than the city. And so I think that, as we move forward, we can continue to debate it, we can keep kicking the can, but eventually, it's gonna dawn on all of us that any funding for sidewalk repair, for sustained effort, is going to be, take, done through a resident of that community and the owner of that house is going to ultimately pay for it. One thing just came out in the paper on August 26. A professor from UCLA just did a study and published it in the L.A. Times, and he talked about the best way to resolve the sidewalk problem is to deal with it through point-of-sale. He estimates that every house in the city is sold at least once every 12 years. Had we started this back in 2005, when the original motion came forward, we can see that somewhere between 30 and 40% of our sidewalks would have been done. The other thing I think we have to correct, in '72, the city didn't take control of our sidewalks. They took control of sidewalks broken by trees. The city began to allow all sidewalks to fit into that program, and now we're, believe we're responsible for all sidewalks. We should be citing people and getting folks that are dealing with sidewalks not broken by trees to fix their own sidewalks today. That's a large number of sidewalks that do not fit under the ordinance and does not require us to do anything other than start a process of notification, inspection, and citing.
You can be mindful of your time if you want to press it again.
Okay, let me just finish. And to provide the situation in which we give owners notice and do the same thing we do with other building and safety, where we have the ability to put liens if we have to repair it for them. So I would suggest that we not continue to study and report something that we know is broken. All we need to do is drive down our streets, and any place there's a tree, there's a broken sidewalk.
Mr. Blumenfeld, followed by Mr. Fuentes, followed by Mr. Kocorian again.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I mean, the roads that we have, they link our city, but the sidewalks, they define our community. When we mend our sidewalks, we breathe life into our communities, and it is time to do that. And I really am grateful that Mr. Buscaino was bringing this motion forward, moving the conversation forward, asking the CAO to come up with a number of solutions, a number of ideas. It's not the solution itself, but it is, it is that necessary push forward to get us to more solutions. And there are a lot of solutions, a lot that we've been talking about. I have my couple of motions in, one about the 50-50 program for commercial property, one about looking at new materials for sidewalks. Because sidewalks of today are not your grandfather's sidewalks. Sidewalks today, we recognize, not only link our community, but they deal with issues of water recharge, they deal with water runoff. There's all sorts of creative ways that we can fix sidewalks in ways that we could never even conceive of 10 or 20 years ago. So this is a very good motion that I urge support of, because it's gonna move us forward. It's instructing to get a menu of choices out there from the CAO and getting them to come up with, with solutions. Because it is high time that we move forward with solutions. Our sidewalks are in disrepair, and when our sidewalks are in disrepair, our communities are suffering. I urge support.
Councilmember Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. Englander, colleagues. I couldn't agree more with what everything that has been said, more emphatically. I want to ask staff a couple of questions here, and I want to offer an idea. Particularly, sort of the recommendations that are being moved here today. Item 3 speaks to instructing the CAO and the CLA to report on recommendations for developing low or no-interest sort of financing for all of this. I think it speaks directly to Mr. Parks's point that we've got to come up with some financing mechanisms for all of this. When will we sort of flesh out when we would do this? Would this be sort of point-of-sale at this point, like we do with the gas shut-off valve? Where is it that we would sort of introduce this concept to the property owner? And then on item 7, there about instructing the Bureau of Engineering to develop and maintain design-construction standards, et cetera. As Mr. Blumenfeld mentioned, there's an opportunity here to leverage some other multiple benefits that we have, or multiple challenges with multiple benefits, with storm water runoff, et cetera. I would just suggest that we add L.A. sanitation into item number 7. But as it relates to sort of how we would do item 3, any sense as to how we would do that?
We're looking at a couple of options. Miguel Santana, CAO. One of them is, there are certain materials that allow the water to seep into the water table. And there's a, there's a state program that allows a property owner to actually place an assessment on their own property, as long as that the revenue that they're using from that assessment goes back to improvements on that property that improve the environment. So anything from solar panels to certain window treatments, to even sidewalks. And so we're looking at that as a current option. The reason why that may be, may work in this context is that we're, as part of the research that we've been doing, we've identified, through the work of some of your colleagues, sidewalks that are tiles that allow the water to seep through the cracks and are much more environmentally friendly. And so we're exploring various options like that, that make certain financing opportunities much more viable.
Very good. I'm gonna run out of time here, so I'll hit my button again. But I think there's a real distinction here that is gonna be very difficult to sort of settle on in terms of liability or responsibility, let's just use the word responsibility for the time being, and sort of cost. And that line seems to be moving an awful lot, in terms of sort of what it means to us and the homeowner. Is there a test that you all are sort of coming up with to help understand some of the points that Mr. Parks mentioned in terms of where we actually do have sort of the, well, it seems to me that the city of Los Angeles ultimately has a responsibility to make sure...
If you can watch your time again, please.
Folks can move back and forth. But are you all devising a test to determine who has the responsibility and the liability based on whether it's tree roots, whether it's our deferred maintenance? That sort of stuff seems to make a real sort of difference, I think, ultimately, in how we pay for it.
Well, ultimately, the program that we'll develop and bring before you will have to resolve those fundamental questions. And, and part of the reason, as Mr. Parks indicated and others, that the sidewalks are in the condition that they are today is that the city has conflicting policy. And, and so nothing's really been done at a comprehensive level. So the first question that we'll have to answer is ultimately, whose responsibility is it? Is it, will it continue being the city's in the case of when damage is done by a tree root? Will we go back to the longstanding state legislation, which clearly makes it the responsibility of the property owner? Or is it, or does that change over time? You know, one of the ideas that's been talked about is a potential fix-and-release type of program, where the city would take some initial responsibility at the beginning, but then, on an ongoing basis, that would be transferred on to the property owner. So those are all issues that we're, we're gonna be looking at, working closely with the city attorney's office to make sure that it's consistent with whatever outcome comes out of the Willett's litigation.
Councilmember Kocorian, and then back to Councilmember Parks. If I can remind folks to just watch their time, you can always push your button again if need be. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Just a couple of real brief points, and I want to thank Mr. Parks for his comments and his important work that he's done on this over the many years. I just want to emphasize, what we're talking about here is not, as Mr. Parks stated, more study. What we're asking for is specific policy recommendations that this council is going to act on in a matter of weeks, when we get these recommendations back. This is not asking for a study. In fact, this council specifically rejected the idea of a comprehensive study of our sidewalks. It would have cost millions of dollars to engage in. No, what we're talking about is specific policy recommendations, which we will then have the burden of assessing and determining what is the right path forward. But that path is a path that we are on, as of right now, and we're not getting off that path. In terms of not stating a specific funding source, that's true. But we will be doing that as soon as this process is completed. We certainly can't do it at a time when we don't have a policy before us. But I will say that in this year's, in this fiscal year, we will be spending $27 million on sidewalk repair, far more than this city has spent in, certainly in decades, on sidewalks. $10 million was appropriated last year, $20 million is appropriated this year, because we didn't have the exact kind of policy that we're talking about today. Last year, when that was appropriated, they weren't able to spend the money fast enough. Last year, when that was appropriated, they weren't able to spend the money fast enough. So we still have $7 million that's rolled over from that, $20 million this year. We will have a comprehensive policy that will enable that money to be spent, and spent on sidewalk repairs, and then have a projected path forward for the decades to come until the entire process is done. And for those who will say, and I know there are those in the blogosphere and so on who will say, "Well, $27 million, what's that when you have backlog of, you know, in the hundreds of millions?" That is absolutely true, which is why we need to embark upon a sustainable policy direction now that we will commit ourselves to for the decades that it will take to complete the entire job. No one thinks that we're going to do, spend $27 million and be finished with this. We're going to spend this money, and then we're going to embark in a sustainable path towards completion of the entire sidewalk system. And then one last point, I know it's a technical one, but Mr. Parks did mention in passing that the city is legally obligated to fix all the sidewalks. I think that was just a kind of a bit of an overstatement. The legal liability that the city has is a complicated legal question, whether you're talking about a personal injury, whether you're talking about access under the ADA, whether you're talking about the differentiation between the legal responsibility of the property owner and the city. Those are very complicated questions. I just want to make sure that the record doesn't reflect that this council somehow thinks that that's decided as a city liability.
Councilmember Parks.
Thank you. Miguel, let me ask you just a couple of questions. On item 20, could you give us some idea of how you're going to address such as A, when we talk about the highest potential of liability for public access to public facilities versus the equity question? Because so many districts may not have a large number of city facilities.
Well, I'll turn to this sheet here if you, all of you should have a copy of this. So as Mr. Krikorian indicated, the city is currently spending $27 million on sidewalk repair. And the way the city is pursuing this work is by identifying sidewalks that are damaged around city-owned properties. The reason we pursue that strategy is because there is no question, no doubt whatsoever that the city is 100% responsible for the sidewalks around city properties. And so there's a liability there, that we have a duty under the ADA to ensure accessibility for the disabled around city properties and venues. And so working with the various departments, we've identified sidewalks around our libraries, our fire departments, our fire stations, wrecking parks throughout the city, so that we're taking care of that responsibility first and foremost. Beyond that, you know, the way the program gets rolled out, you know, the focus, the discussion we've been having currently is to look at sidewalks that have the greatest usage. So somehow identifying those communities with the greatest amount of density, the high transit-dependent communities, the areas where there is more foot traffic than other parts of the city, again, because there's accessibility issues in terms of assuring that the disabled have access to various parts of the city.
Let me ask you one other question. Is that, is part of your study going to actually look at whether the city should consider returning the sidewalks under the 1911 Act? Is that part, because it doesn't mention it in either motion?
Yes.
So we'll be looking at that. The other thing, all I'd ask is that the equity issue not get lost, because so many times, smaller, poorer districts that are older, sometimes there's formulas that deal with amount of sidewalks versus the overused sidewalks, and that we not lose sight of equity, particularly in districts that do not have a large number of public facilities, that could get ignored in the process. So I just ask, when you go through that, that you deal with that? Thank you.
Fair enough. Councilmember Fuentes.
Thank you. Couple of observations here. One, you know, I don't know that I would sort of look at it in terms of this item here, but Assembly Bill 243 by Roger Dickinson in the legislature is making its way in its the enhanced infrastructure financing authority. I think it only speaks to redevelopment, former redevelopment boundaries, but it's my sense that there's an opportunity here to sort of, assuming that it gets signed into law, and my sense is that there's an understanding with the governor's office, this might be sort of a funding mechanism for parts of the city of Los Angeles. So I just would ask, Miguel, that you would take a look at that. But one thing that I would want to suggest, and hopefully it will be seen as friendly to your research, Mr. Santana, is I have to imagine most of you, like myself, have received the notice that my taxes are going up, the assessment is being done. The good news, bad news about the recession is that my property taxes went down. The bad news is that they're going back up. And I'm wondering out loud, and would like to sort of see if we can add this as a report back, if there isn't an opportunity for the City of Los Angeles to freeze a percentage of the city share of the property taxes and move it towards the fund that is being suggested here for sidewalk repair. So I'm not suggesting a complete tax increment financing scheme where you freeze all of the city portion. I don't think that we would want or could afford, on a growth perspective, to not count on that revenue. But I have to imagine that a certain percentage of that city share, my property taxes, goes to the front and the infrastructure around my home. Now, the question becomes, how is that different from what it is that we already do here in this body, in terms of making money move towards infrastructure, et cetera? I would argue that districts like the one that I represent, the joke this past weekend with some friends was that we wish that we had buckled sidewalks. We don't have some of the basic infrastructure, and forgive me for pleading poverty here, but with the exception of the equestrian parts of Los Angeles, like in CD 12 and CD 7, I have communities that have absolutely no sidewalks, don't have any streetlights, but have the good fortune of being the recipients of grants for curb cuts. So imagine for a second, walking through a curb cut, no sidewalk, and no lighting. So to me, the context by which I think we should try to move some of these programs is making sure that we have accessibility, and I'm going to steer clear of what I mean by that. But we have to have unfettered accessibility throughout Los Angeles. So the idea goes like this. If we take a percentage of our property taxes, now, Mr. Parks, I think, brightly illuminates the point here that it's going to be paid for by somebody. I'm speaking to prospective monies that are going to be coming into the city of Los Angeles as a result of the increased assessment that taxpayers are realizing on their investment. They would be paying for it, but we're paying for it today, one way or the other. My hope here is that we'd be able to freeze a percentage of that and then be able to bond against it in order to jumpstart some of these funds, so that we can make up ground as quickly as possible on the need. But when I asked a little bit about sort of devising the test, Mr. Santana, what I intended to sort of try to say here is that there's a real difference between operation and maintenance, and then we've gotten to a place in Los Angeles, notwithstanding parts of CD 7 that don't have any sidewalks, we've gotten to a place in the city of Los Angeles where we actually have deferred maintenance so severe that we no longer have the opportunity to remediate the thing without actually reconstructing and having brand-new construction. I think that point is pivotal in that we have to decide where it is that these monies can be spent. Can they be spent on O&M? Or is it to sort of jumpstart the process and do construction and reconstruction areas that have long outlived their deferred maintenance sort of schedule? So for me, I would love to, if it's okay as a friendly amendment, to have you all come back and report on that financing idea, to see if there's a way for us to deal with our city portion of the property taxes so that we can jumpstart this effort.
We'll do that.
Mr. Buscagno, I'm happy to accept Mr. Fuentes's recommendation as a friendly amendment. It seems like Mr. Buscagno does as well.
You'd look at other revenue sources to fix this problem. Absolutely. Yes.
Okay, thank you. And seeing no other speakers on the queue, what's before us? These are recommendations to look at various options that are going to come back to us, and there are some very good ones, some questionable ones. We'll go ahead and vet those. I just wanted to let the general public know we'd had some questions on that as well, what we were actually voting on, for clarification. For further clarification, there's a good chance that there'll be options to bifurcate and separate out some of the options to vote on, perhaps separately as well. It may or may not come back as just one package, but various options to look at as well. So with that, we'll go ahead and open the roll to ask for these reports. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Great, thank you.
It's adopted as amended.
Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and move to, oh, if we could also, Madam Clerk, item 32, forthwith, without objection. Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and go to item 1 on the agenda. Donna, item 1. And if we could not have any applauding from the chambers.
Hello, this is Donna.
Chambers.
Glad you're going to come up with some ideas, maybe not hit the homeowners, but anyway, for sidewalks. Anyway, what we got over here is an awful lot of liens over here, especially, I'm worried about the number B, 51,60272. Now, why do you allow the liens to be so large? These people couldn't possibly pay for it, and especially with penalties, mostly with penalties going over penalties. They may not even know, you don't even know if they even saw the lien, or whether the person understands what needs to be done with the lien. A lot of these things are in legalese, and a lot of times, you don't, they'll say, "Well, they got the notice," but you don't even know if they really understood it. So basically, we got over here, we should never be allowed to have, we need to work out with these people before they get these liens way out of hand, like 24,747, and this one for 51,16272, because these people, you'll never be able to get the revenue, and you'll never be able to pay these. So I'm going to let it go right now, so, okay. And reopen Van Nuys video conferencing.
All right. With that, we're also going to continue a couple of items. One C will be continued for two weeks, so that'll be September 9th. One C for two weeks, again, September 9th. One E will be continued for 30 days, which is September 26th. The next speaker on one A, Daniel Khalil.
And also, Mr. President, those requests to continue one B to September 9th.
And one B to September 9th as well, yes.
This is Daniel Khalil. We purchased this building, we didn't purchase it, we are in the escrow right now. We are going to close the escrow end of this week, Friday. I just here to get the help from you to avoid the penalty or something, because we are thinking to develop this building, and we already also bought the next building to that 1515, and we want to develop the both building. We just here to get the help to pay less penalties. And this building already been burned out, and we have a lot of expensive to develop it, and we are thinking to do it. We just asking avoid the penalties, not more.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Please, no applauding from the council chambers, that'll be a final warning, it is disruptive.
Okay, this is your final warning, City Council. You need to stop taking properties away from people through your illegal liens. You have the poor people that buy a house, buy a place, and they come begging to you to, "Please, please, don't give me more penalties." Who the hell you think you are? You're elected officials that were supposed to help people, not take everything from the people. Who the hell are you people? Who sent you here? I don't believe in the supernatural, but I think you're all a bunch of devils.
If you could stay on the actual item, please.
Yeah, the actual item means, why are you penalizing people that already have a little place to live? Why don't you create programs that will allow everybody a place to live, instead of trying to take everything away from everybody? Right outside, they had demonstrations just now about the same thing. You give us a little bit of a wage increase, and you take everything away in other ways. Who the hell are you people? I would like to know, what devil sent you here? And I don't even believe in those devil things. It's just people against people, and you are the worst enemy of the people. There's no damn way that we elected you to penalize us every single step we take. If you don't have a light in your bicycle, you get a $75 ticket. If you don't have this, if you don't have that, screw you, city hall, screw you all the way. You don't need, we don't need you.
All right, again, you're way off subject, so not on the agenda item. Okay, seeing no other cards on the balance of the items, on number 1, we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Thank you very much. We'll go ahead and go to item 2 for cards. And we have Mr. Langford. Stick to the item.
Because bottom line is this, we do not care for a CVS store located for the consumption of alcohol in necessity at 707 Fourth Place, East Fourth Place, in Council District 14. Mr. Weisar, Senator Ben Wesselhead, who got your DUI for drinking and driving as a result of giving and issuing permits all over the city of Los Angeles. Do you wish to continue to permit alcohol necessities for us just to go one foot, three feet for necessity of alcohol? This is ridiculous. And Batman's here to confirm the truth and the fact of the matter that Jose Weisar paid out $185,000 for his DUI and got away with it. And now I'm talking about you, Senator from Sacramento, Mr. Ben Wessel, H-U-E-S-O. How dare you abuse the system of driving with the privilege of a license for necessity and alcohol? This store is located at 210 West 7th Street, Los Angeles 90014. Great. This is what we need. We need more sales of alcohol. And I'm going to sing the favorite song that we're all looking forward to, Jay-Z and Beyoncé, "Not Drunk in Love." Drunken alcoholics from the Council District, of all our members here, who have violated the privileges of what it's like not to be an alcoholic. You abusive, selfish, insincere, incompetent, incoherent persons that allow this necessity for sales and convenience of alcohol. I got 11 seconds, and this is how I protest.
Donna.
Okay, we got way too many places with alcohol. It seems to me that you're just inviting disaster, to having every place that's so close by, now even a CVS, to be having all this alcohol so they can, people can stay there late at night, drink, and then drive. So I'll just basically say real quickly that we don't need to have more alcohol, and it seems to be these people over in that area, they're saying there's too many areas of alcohol already being sold. of alcohol already being sold there, so you just wanna kill off the poor population by hoping they'll just drink and kill themselves. Okay, it's wrong.
Yes, I'm so sorry, I didn't bring my skull hat, which means death. Death because of drunken driving. You guys keep prohibiting in other drugs or trying to legalize them so you can make revenue, such as marijuana. I don't endorse any drugs, but at the same time, if you're gonna endorse alcohol, what the hell, what are you thinking? Are you stupid? Alcohol is a drug, you idiots. Haven't you heard that alcohol kills more people than any other drug? And you wanna allow CVS or any pharmacy to sell more alcohol so the kids can come in and buy an ice cream and then buy a bottle of whiskey? Stupid! What a stupid society.
Go ahead and open the roll on that item, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, we actually got some cards on item 34. We've already believed, voted on that, it was received and filed, so we'll go ahead and reconsider that item so we can take the public comment on that. Sir City Attorney, would you like us to reconsider that and have a vote for reconsideration or without objection?
You should have a vote.
Okay, we'll go ahead and vote, colleagues, for reconsideration on item 34. We'll open the roll on that item, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That item is now before us. I'd like to call George Abrams. Or Abraham. Apologize.
Okay, thank you for reconsidering the item. Okay, Richard McNaughton is not authorized to represent Save Hollywood in any negotiation with the city or any settled agreement. He was terminated on July 5th, 2014, by the governing body of Save Hollywood, the Legal Committee. Mr. McNaughton has been trying to say that he remains counsel because the Legal Committee no longer consists of Fran Reichenbach and myself, and he presented this claim to the court before Judge Goodman. Judge Goodman heard his claim and dismissed his motion with prejudice, which means that not only was he wrong, he doesn't, they never want to hear about it again. So before a court of law, our standing as the governing body of Save Hollywood has been established. Save Hollywood fully expects to participate in the city's appeal of the infrastructure ruling, and we ask that the city do not go into any settled agreement with Mr. Richard
Thank you. Fran Reichenbach?
Hi there. Thanks again for reconsidering this. I'm a part of savehollywood.org's Legal Committee. The Legal Committee has found it necessary for many reasons to terminate Richard McNaughton as counsel for Save Hollywood. As you enter discussions in closed session, know that Save Hollywood is not bound by any offers that Mr. McNaughton may have presented to you. We are eager to join the appeal along with Fix the City and La Marada in the Hollywood Community Plan litigation.
Okay, unfortunately, you're going to have too transparency on exactly what this lawsuit is about, but apparently I would think that we got way too many lawsuits over here, and we need to try to settle these before they get way out of hand, before they even turn into a lawsuit. So, and I think that Save the Hollywood would seem like they would be on the correct side, so, let's stop, let's, you need to be more trans, anyway, you need to be more fair with these people, so, let's settle.
Okay, we have a card from Juan, we'll go ahead and note and file your card. Thank you very much, you're out of time. So with that, seeing no other speakers on the queue and no other cards, we'll go ahead and open the roll.
The recommendation is to note and file this item.
Oh, I'm sorry, was it, it was a note and file, we'll go ahead and do that without objection then. Okay, item 13 was called special by one of our colleagues, don't know if that, still has a question, we'll go ahead and vote on item 13, I believe that's been clarified. Open the roll on item 13, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Great, thank you. Now we'll go ahead and go into our fun part of the event. Councilmember Parks.
I'd just like to get one thing clarified, we were monitoring number 18, and I understand that it was sent back to committee. Can we get an idea why and when it might come back?
That went back to, I believe that went back to the Rules Committee?
Yes.
And we can get clarification?
No, we had a request that that occurred, and we accommodated it.
Do we know who did the request, because we didn't? Do we know who did the request?
Well, I took care of it, it's president.
Okay, we'll go ahead and, let's go ahead and go into general public comment, we'll still be in the meeting, and if we need to revisit that, we can do that during the meeting as well, let you guys figure that out on the side. Yeah, you forfeiting your time, or? Be ready, please, when we call your name. Juan, come on up, it looks like you're ready.
I'm always ready. You know what I'm gonna talk about, but hold on. Is it Donna's time or my time?
It's Juan's time, we've already started his time.
Okay. Yeah. You know I'm gonna talk about homelessness, because that's what I do. I'm looking for Miley Cyrus, that famous actress, or what is she, singer? Last year, Bad Girl, this year, Good Girl, because she's talking about the homeless now? Uh? You know what this is? You guys know what this is? It represents a lot of money for the city. You know what you have to do? You have to put it on the, in the red line, you have to put it in the subways, because people write on the wall saying, "We don't like the stuff you do." Why do people do graffiti? Because they don't like the stuff you do. They don't like it, and you have to spend millions of dollars to put this over the wall, and then when people write on there, then you take it off, and then you put more of it in there. Look at the waste. And then you're talking about not putting any more plastic in the water. You know the toxic materials that are in this stuff? Uh? The whole city is toxic. You have a toxic city, and most of it comes from not allowing people to do what is right, because you are following a pattern that got started when the American Revolution. We, the people, we, the people are nothing. We, the people, were put aside to say government knows more than the people. You're a bunch of idiots, you know nothing.
I was just cleaning off my phone. Okay, anyway, this is Donna Perman, this is a public comment, right? We need to reopen Van Nuys video conferencing, not having it is against the ADA. You're not ADA compliant, making it hard for access for disabled seniors and those with illnesses, especially Marion Fogler, who has urgent messages. Anyway, I want to tell you, ISIS is a death cult, it's not Islam. Don't, many don't even know the religion. ISIS is in 38 countries, in Britain, US, and Canada, some of them. We need to protect ourselves against ISIS and a group in Nigeria. We need to destroy Abu Bakr Baghdadi and the leader. We need to protect, oh yeah, law-abiding Americans have a lot of restrictions to access to firepower. We need to be able to have access to assault weapons, those who know how to use them. Military first, to be well-funded, it's absolute necessity. Police then, and civilians if need be. ISIS is planning to destroy a major US city. We, and we need to ask our, we need to have our borders to be secure. No, our borders not to be open without security. Let me tell you, ISIS is being well-funded with millions of dollars, we need to go after their funding, bomb their oil fields, stop their funding of beheading. America needs other countries to stop ISIS. ISIS will destroy your civilization, no mercy. They suppose for Sharia law in the city of Mosul, for anyone who disagree with them, they execute them, even though who preach Islam. We have to do it now, or it will be, or it will be too late. We won't be able to, we need to, all need to be banned together. Our country needs to look beyond race, come together, be united, be stand, invited to fall, because over there, the terrorists are coming together.
All right, look, General Martin Dempsey has basically called on the Congress to declare war on ISIS. Now, the problem is, you have a president who supports ISIS. Am I lying? I don't think so. When you have a president who wants to get rid of Assad, and the way he does it is, well, let ISIS run amok in that, in Syria, but let's bomb them, a little bombing in Iraq. It's a confused administration, because at the, at the, at the funding source is the Saudi government, and I've been indicating that HR 428 will expose the Saudi funding of 9/11, HR 428. We have to destroy it, yes, but we have to have a federal government willing to side with the American people. If you're going to destroy this force, which General Martin Dempsey already declared, it's an apocalyptic force, so we, as Americans, have to get ready, because we are dealing with something big. It can destroy civilization, it can ignite World War III, and the only way to do that is we have to declare war against the goddamn British Empire. Until you realize that, you would not, you wouldn't ever, ever, ever survive this. So, I do have a meeting that people should go to, they should log on to LaRouche Pack, but it's gonna take place this Saturday, August 30th, at the, from 11:00 to 5:00 PM at THR OO Memorial Church. You have to declare war on this crap. It's, now it's just going to blow up in your face. You have to join with LaRouche now, China, Russia, and other countries have, that's what the BRICS are. We will move forward.
Good morning. Good morning, Mike Greenspan. Did you hear about the rabbi married to a nun? She gave him none in the morning, none in the evening, and none at night. Sounds like my parents' rabbi, Howie Greenstein. Oops. I thought I thawed, I thought I thawed, I thought I thawed the Ku Klux Klan. And you know what? I thawed, I thawed the Ku Klux Klan in Joplinville, home of the Jaguar team, not moving to the billion-dollar boondoggle of Farmer Field in Los Angeles. What did KTLA Union Tourer Eric Tillman tea from the studio on Canteb Boulevard? He thawed the Joplinville Jaguar team in Los Angeles. Super good, LTD from Mitter Tillman, alma mater Cal, in the Lipton Totolit Republic of Berkeley. What did you tea, Council President Mitter Wetton? What did Mitter John Walt tea? Mitter Tax, what did you tea? Take your fit at me, Union Tourer Eric Tillman, take your fit at me. I thawed the name of Nathaniel Bedford-Forey, first grand wizard of the Ku Klux Klan on a public heitul in Joplinville, Florida, in it on the wet tide of town. Alto, the Jaguar team, till plate in Joplinville. At, Union Bot Toval. What did you tea? I thawed, I thawed the Ku Klux Klan, I thawed, I thawed the Ku Klux Klan. Say hi to Jessica Homet, Taran Tay, and Doozy Duff.
George.
George Abrahams, I'm a member of the Central Hollywood Neighborhood Council Planning and Land Use Management Committee. On June 26th of this year, three members of neighborhood councils were denied entrance to the Hollywood Design Review Committee of Councilman Farrell's office. We complained to the city attorney, saying that this is a public meeting, subject to the Brown Act, and we got a letter in reply from Deputy City Attorney Deion O'Connell, saying that the Hollywood Design Review Committee was created by a single decision-maker, Councilman Mitch O'Farrell, and not by a formal action of the Los Angeles City Council. Therefore, the HDRC briefings of the single decision-maker are not required to be open to the public pursuant to the Brown Act. But there's only one problem, Council File 002362, which was an action of the Los Angeles City Council to establish the Hollywood Design Review Committee. And in the vote, what is very interesting is that one of the people who voted for it was Councilman Mike Fuer. So we got a letter from City Attorney Mike Fuer, saying it didn't happen, yet we have a council vote in which he participated, saying it did. So I'd like to ask the city council to advise Mitch O'Farrell to make all future meetings of the Hollywood Design Review Committee open to the public, and that they are subject to the Brown Act.
Antonio Taylor? Or Antoine Taylor? Not here?
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. I'm the only one in this building, I want to say, this is, you just passed it without speaking. It's Women's Equality Day, and there's nothing more sexist than 14 out of 15 members of, and plus the three statewide, one out of seven, out of 18 women in leadership positions in the city of Los Angeles unparalleled in any other city. Ladies and gentlemen, you know, there's a gang war going on. It was triggered by the shooting of Suge Knight at a club. Remember, what this is all about is all the clubs, east, west Hollywood Hollywood, there are gangsters selling narcotics. They're fighting over who gets the money. There's millions of dollars. You do not see this in the newspaper, but you will see it at my website, HollywoodHighlands.org. And I want you to know, what is incredible is that the person who beheaded the journalist, the whole world knows his name. It's in every newspaper on earth, except in the United States, and on my website here in LA. His name was Abdul Barry. He's a white man, he is a rapper, he calls himself John Lennon, he's a Beatles fan, and he's the man. You can see his picture on my website at Hollywood Dems. This is an enormous story, but nowhere in America is this story being, it's all being covered up. His name is Abdul Barry, he's a good-looking man, he's bloodthirsty, and he, and he's not really an Arab, he's an, he's an Englishman. HollywoodHighlands.org, come to the website, J. Walsh Confidential, all the information is up there that you can't find anyone else, and there will be a gang war starting this weekend.
Herman.
And, Mr. Speaker, with those large ears, you should hear my name when I speak, under the name of Batman. But, let's get on to business. To be protected by the ADA, one must have a disability or have a relationship associated with an individual with a disability. An individual with a disability is defined by the ADA as a person who has a physical or mental impairment that substantially limits one or more major life activities, Mr. Big Ears, as I read on. So, item O Business 19 and 20, the action of the city to leave our sidewalks and streets, infrastructure not repaired. Mr. Corret, you're gonna get fat eating all that food there, why don't you slow down? And going back on topic, what about AB Bill 194? AB 194, do you get it? Sacramento, and that senator, Ms. Campos, you got a lesson to learn about the Brown Act. You will not tell us our rights under, above, below what the Brown Act states. You will follow the instruction of the law, the letter of the law, Mr. Big Ears, so that everyone applies by the same constitution of my First Amendment right under ADA. My freedom of speech and the declaration of my First Amendment right to use the non-legal lethal weapon of what you're doing is wrong. So in the last six seconds, I say to you, you will not violate our rights when fixing sidewalks and streets, for you will follow state and federal laws based upon that agreement.
Okay, you're out of time. Thank you so much. And with that, that concludes the fun part of the day. So we now have announcements. Any announcements? Seeing no announcements, do we have motions for posting referral?
Yes, Council has motions for posting a referral.
We'll go ahead and post and refer those. Any other business before us?
The desk is clear.
Okay, the desk is clear. Do we have adjourning motions? Yes. Everybody, please rise for adjourning motions. Councilmember Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. Englander. Colleagues, unfortunately, Mr. Weisar had to be excused from the meeting, and he asked that I adjourn in memory of longtime Eagle Rock resident, business owner, and great community leader, Julio Shimbari. His family is with us here today. After serving in the United States Navy in, during World War II, Julio moved to Los Angeles, where in 1959, he opened and operated Julio's Italian Restaurant on Eagle Rock Boulevard for 42 years. During that time, he was very involved in the community as an active member of the Eagle Rock Chamber of Commerce, the Eagle Rock Kiwanis Club, Pasadena Rose Bowl Writers, Vagueros Writing Club of Los Angeles, and a member of the Oakmont Country Club Glendale. He loved singing, loved life, he would break out in song anywhere at the drop of a hat. After retirement, he moved to Victorville, California, where on June 22nd, he peacefully concluded his life at the age of 85. He was laid to rest at Calvary Cemetery in Los Angeles. Julio was survived by his two sisters, his wife of 22 years, Kathleen, his sons, Skip, and his wife Barbara, and Julio Jr. and his wife Deborah, John and stepson David, grandchildren, Lisa, Teresa, Blair, Paul, Michael, and Harley, and great-grandchildren, Laney, Jessica, Owen, Aiden, Logan, and Ava. Condolences to his family and friends. He will be greatly missed, and we will conclude today's session in his memory.
Thank you. Seeing any others? I have one. On August 18th, Andreas Andy Medallion, an environmental engineer with the Wastewater Conveyance Engineering Division, the Bureau of Engineering passed away. Andy was born December 28th, 1954, in Iran. He earned a Bachelor of Science degree in physical chemistry in 1977 from the National University in Tehran. He earned a Master of Science degree in physical chemistry in 1979 from Parz University, University in Tehran. He was granted asylum in the United States in May of 1982, and began working for the city of LA shortly after. He worked for the city continuously for nearly 32 years. Some of the projects Andy worked on include Hyperion Energy Recovery Systems, the Terminal Island Treatment Plant, Lift Station Project, East Central Interceptor Sewer, and of course, the Northridge Earthquake Sewer Repair. Andy was a member of several associations, including the American Society of Civil Engineers and Water Pollution Control Federation. Our deepest sympathies on behalf of our entire city family go to his family, his coworkers, and his friends. Andy leaves behind his former wife, Hilda, sister Pamela, brother Jacob, and two daughters, Annette and Christina. May he rest in peace. Thank you. That concludes the adjourning motions, that concludes the agenda items. We are adjourned. Go in.